No, I don't have anything to record it. Okay, it is a little after six. We'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. I'll do a real call real quick. Mrs. Lyon?
Yep.
Mr. Kaber?
Yes.
Mrs. DeBlock? Mr. Helm?
Yes.
Mrs. Cleveland?
Yes.
Mr. Fuller will have here. A pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the citizens of the United States of America. Intended for the betterment of our citizens, of our nation, and of our individual and the liberty of our citizens.
So, thank you all for coming tonight. We're doing something a little bit different to kick off basically the school year for us. And one of the things that we've always had was a state of the district address, but we would always do it up at the unit office and it was around February. And so, Dr. Johnson did a kind of smaller version, but he wanted to make sure there was a nice public version where people have the opportunity to see what's been going on in the district. Dr. Johnson, if you all haven't met him or haven't met him out there, he has been our superintendent now for two years. It seems like it's been a longer process because we started the search process so early, but you know, he certainly impressed us in his interview and the first year for us as a board has just been absolutely awesome with him. He's friendly, but holds people accountable. He really gets after even the smallest details, as he says, "He never sweeps anything under the rug." Just, again, small attention to details. I'm not going to say everything because I was going to preview what he said, but he lovely put it in his PowerPoint thing, so you know where we're going there. But just an example, I don't know if it's in your speech, but with the way the market's been lately, he like dug into all our savings accounts and realized by moving money around in the first years here, he found, he basically netted us about $300,000 just by being prudent with our financial decisions and getting after finding investment accounts that would actually stretch our money even further. So, those are the things that you just don't see on a day-to-day that Dr. Johnson does. And another thing that I've learned is our previous superintendent, Mr. Alan Boucher, is now the acting superintendent of Rocky. And when talking to him, I'm like, "How's it going?" He's like, "It's weird. I have a whole staff of people that do things and I'm kind of lost." He was so used to doing everything. And what's unique about this district is people don't understand, we have great administrators, we have great teachers, but a lot of that work that falls on a big, on a big district, he does it all. Discipline, everything. And so, no one sees the true gamut of what his day truly looks like. And no day is ever, ever the same. So, we're looking forward to his remarks here. And the last one I'll say is, you know, the thing I really like about Carl is he always has his eye on the horizon. You know, not only what's going to impact us in the here and now, but what's going to impact us one year, two years, five years, 10 years, 20 years down the road. And having someone that has that forethought is what's going to continue to make this district very, very successful. So, with that, it's my pleasure to introduce Dr. Carl Johnson.
Thanks for the kind words, Reese. I'm going to try to live up to them here. Now, what he was talking about with investments, that's a double-edged sword as a guy who's getting ready to build a house in the district. So, as I celebrate, when we look at CDs for the district, I kind of cry a little bit when I look at mortgage rates and what's going to happen. So, but hey, nonetheless, it's turning out great. I'm very, very happy to be the superintendent serving the Sherard District. I'm just going to talk to you basically tonight about some of the great things that are happening, some of the things that we're looking forward to, and then obviously some of the things that we might need to keep an eye on and perhaps worry about in the future. First, I do want to actually show you, so you can look at something far more attractive than me, show you a few things that are happening in the district. So, several things that we'll talk about tonight, you got a chance to see firsthand. We'll start tonight talking about our students. I think as every educator should, we should start with our students and keep that at the front of what we do, as long as we keep that student-centered approach all the way from the board to the teachers, from the offices to the buses, from the cafeteria to the superintendent. I think that's going to make a positive difference, not only in our students' lives, but also our own. It's a, it's an exponential way of giving, if you will. Our students. You could talk about our students and really look at four Rs. They're resilient, they're reliable, they're remarkable, and because of the efforts of the school district and the parents, they're certainly ready. They've achieved so much over the past year and they're off to a great start again already. Time and again, they show they're resilient and they can overcome obstacles. I think the past three years, we've, we've seen that more so than we ever have in history before. They're community-oriented. They're always accomplishing more when they're not in school. They're doing great things outside of these walls and outside of the classrooms. Within the prospectus, you'll find a tremendous amount of information on what our students accomplished last year. When I reached out to the principals in the summertime and said, "Start compiling the list. I want to know what happened," that's literally why you have a handout that's that thick, because of the great things that the kids have done. So, I think that's certainly worth the extra paper, that's for sure. We always want to make sure we keep a two-pronged approach at Sherard. Celebrate your successes, but work to improve because yesterday's best might not be good enough today. Our students are ready. We're proud to have a district that's preparing students for a variety of opportunities. Everything from college to trades, we're giving kids a chance to succeed, no matter what they choose. I think we should also be, again, proud of our students for what they accomplish outside of the classroom and our extracurriculars and our co-curriculars. Take a look at the accomplishments in there, the agricultural programs alone. They're representative of the commitment that the community has to the district that then in turn honors the roots of the district. And our two teachers, Mr. Rasty and Mr. Hamus, I feel have made this into one of the premier programs in the state of Illinois. Also, we retained the All-Sport Conference Championship for the second year in a row for athletics. When I was selected to serve this district, that was not just athletics, but extracurriculars in general were going to be a focus because I always had a saying when I was a high school principal, that said, "Don't be an eight-to-three student," because that, that's basically what it was. And Sherard's 7:30 to 2:30 doesn't roll off the tongue quite as nicely, so I just stuck with the "don't be an eight-to-three student," and trust me, the kids and parents get it right away. But they're always doing something more. Our staff. Good way to look at our staff is the heartbeat of the district. You can see it every day. And I'm going to start out with a few thoughts from first-year staff members and even some plans from those who are retiring at the end of the year. Kayla, our communications director, asked some new teachers and some retirees, "What are you most looking forward to?" Kyle Ellison said something I'm looking forward to is being able to kick-start the Check and Connect program, where I'll be able to build one-on-one connections with students and be able to see the progress those students make from the beginning to the end of the school year. Russell Jenkins, retiree, said, "I'm looking forward to attending more events at Sherard that are not athletic-driven." And if you've been to a Sherard or Winola athletic event in the last 40 years, you've seen Russell. He's definitely been a standby for us. Jackie Hammerlink says, "I always look forward to graduation. Watching the kids walk across the stage is bittersweet. I always miss them when they go, but to see them achieve the goal of graduation and to hear the stories of all they plan to do after, it doesn't get any better." Patty Gibbs said, "Becoming a part of the Matherville family, meeting all of my students and their families, and finding a way to further enrich their lives, establishing strong and positive relationships with all of the teachers and staff, and sowing seeds of innovation and creativity to foster encouragement and betterment to one-to-one, to one another, and to our community." And finally, Kim McCrae, "I'm just going to try to enjoy my last year with my coworkers and the camaraderie that goes with being a part of the Sherard world. I've had 31 amazing years of being a part of such a great school district and have had the privilege to teach and later work with some outstanding people. Thank you for a beautiful journey." One other thing I'm looking forward to, somewhere down the line, the district will find something to name after me when I'm gone. Too funny. Now, Kim was brave to put that in there because she knows my sense of humor, so it's open game. You've all heard it. Our staff is talented, dedicated, and hardworking. I don't think anybody can deny that. We're fortunate to have some of the most talented staff and faculty in the nation. Our teachers consistently impress me with their talents, dedication, and devotion to their students. Honestly, not a single day goes by where I'm not blown away by the positive aspects I'm able to see in our classrooms. Our paraprofessionals add such support for our students and families that I cannot sing their praises enough. Our transportation staff is second to none. Our drivers and mechanics do not just do their jobs, they truly care for your students. Our cafeteria staff does not just cook and serve. They take the time to truly make sure your students are getting what they need. And this is the right time for a guy my size to say something like, "They cook with love." It's okay to laugh. We have an incredible IT staff, both instructional and behind-the-scenes, making sure things move smoothly. Our facilities look great because of the dedication shown by our maintenance and custodial staff, always doing more than what is asked. Our office staff and administrators deserve the Golden Glove Award for making sure they catch everything that comes their way in an ever-changing and challenging environment. Facilities, which for the last couple of years and for the next couple of years will probably mean construction. It's a fun, demanding topic. It's challenging, it's rewarding, and it's a necessity in order to have what I feel our communities deserve, an effective, attractive district that we can all be proud of. If we grow, this needs to be a continual focal point. I encourage everyone to visit the schools when possible to see what has happened. The short video, just, just literally the tip of the iceberg. Wait till you actually get to step inside that new gym at Sherard Grade School. It is going to be something. I was a little upset that they moved the crane because I had, any kid or younger person that I would see at the Quick Shop in the morning grabbing coffee, I'd be like, "We're just going to go ahead and build around that crane. We're going to leave it in the gym." And you know, kind of like you see a tree growing through a deck. They'd look at me like, "Okay." But, but then they moved it and ruined my joke, so that was fine. You'll read in the prospectus, "The district is nearing the end of our three-year, $14 million construction project." I should probably say projects, plural. I'll dig into the finance of that, finances of that a little more deeply in a few minutes, but take a look at what we've accomplished over the last 15 months. First up, Winola Grade School, near and dear to my heart. The kids always ask me, you know, because I walk in, do a couple laps, talk to people, and then I inevitably end up at the pictures of the graduates, because that's where the Winola High School pictures ended up. I got a call a couple of weeks ago, some of you probably heard this story, from a guy that was actually at my parents' wedding. And my dad passed away 20, 21 years ago, and he said, "Hey, we're having our 60th class reunion. If you want to come and, you know, be a representative of, of the district or, you know, just come and hang out. I'm sure people'd like to see you." So, it was pretty funny that, you know, they'd walk in, they'd be like, you know, "Do you know who this is?" And it'd automatically be like, you know, "That's a Johnson." So, I think that's when it finally set in, when people tell me I sound or look like my brothers, I guess that's the dead giveaway. But Winola, very near and dear to my heart after growing up in Viola. We saw a complete HVAC replacement, and remember, Winola was one of those schools that was built in the late 70s when it was like, "Air conditioning's cool. What do you need windows for?" Well, when air conditioning doesn't work, it's a pretty good idea too. But, so, a lot of gold medals to the Winola staff for sticking it out through the years with a HVAC system that probably wasn't designed to begin very well in the first place. But now, modern, actually designed for the building, so as soon as we get the software to communicate appropriately, I'm thinking we can make some ice cubes in those rooms in the summertime. It was finished, again, there's where that gold medal comes in. It was finished one year later than anticipated because, get ready for it, supply chain issues with the units. Sherard Grade School, you had an opportunity to see the big construction project, the classrooms and the gym that are going on the north side in the back there. But it also had windows. A significant amount of the roofing was replaced. And then there were also some HVAC updates that were also, that were on the existing north end of that building. So, Sherard Grade School is not just going to be bigger, it's going to be better. Matherville, again, a complete HVAC replacement. That ran behind schedule again because of supply chain issues last year, but they were able to get it in and then finally get the software communicating appropriately to control everything. I made reference to Mr. Schillinger when I walked in for backpack night. It was exactly 20 degrees cooler on the sidewalk out front than it was at that time last year. And then I walked inside and it was like a paradise for a guy my size. It's like, "This is great." So, and we went from, you know, 100 to 80 outside, and then it felt like it was about 62 inside. So, I was a happy boy that night. Also, a new roof on the gym and then window replacements all around. Sherard Junior/Senior High School. If you haven't had a chance to see the science rooms, they are, they're a sight to behold. I went to high school here. I remember what they looked like. They do not look like that now. It is really something. State-of-the-art, and then there, with an office space in between for chemical storage. It's just really something. So, if you've not had a chance to look at that sometime, let me know and we'll make sure you can see that. The more obvious things, the lockers were finished approximately September of last year. The new flooring, the color, color in the carpet in the hallways is phenomenal. Massive roofing project. There's very, very few areas on this building, the high school and junior high, that still don't need replacing. We literally just have one more spot left, and then I think we're set for at least probably 10 to 15 years throughout the district. So, in a very good spot with that. We had the gym two refresh. When you walked in there at this time last year, it was amazing. The floor was new. The paint job on the walls was new, so it was really something to walk into and see the transformation. New greenhouse, state-of-the-art greenhouse. If you've not had a chance to see that, perhaps you were at the opening. The grand opening ribbon cutting for that is really something to see. To follow up construction, obviously, we need to talk about how does, how do we pay for that exactly? This is going to be a little bit of a preview of the audit. Lindsay Adams, our business manager and I, we already know what is coming with the audit. In the state of Illinois, very little gets by. We are so heavily regulated and audited in terms of what happens with the money. It's really something to see. I would not invite you to try it, but when the auditors descend on our office, that's the term I use, there's literally close to a dozen of them sitting in the boardroom, going through everything. And it is something to see. But they've already done that. We don't have the audit report yet, but just simply based on what they've asked for, we've got a very good feeling for what the outlook is. Our financial scores have been exceptionally strong, as you can see in there, and that's something that we certainly expect to continue. The December levy of this last year, just like property taxes, you're always a year in arrears, reflected another drop in rates. That was the sixth time in seven years. And then over the course of the past seven years, it has dropped 34 cents overall. We are by far the lowest in the area. Big way that this was paid for was bonding. So, I referenced earlier, looking for, you know, mortgage construction money and how painful that is right now. That was the complete opposite of what happened when the district borrowed the bonds to be able to do all of these projects. They were historical rock-bottom rates, and the board, and the board was able to borrow very, very smartly. They actually were able to borrow bonds and pay off old ones that were significantly higher interest and roll them into a new payment, saving literally six figures when we start talking about that. Coupled together with the grants that I'll talk in a little bit, it allowed the board to dream big and really put some things together. These are the grants that I was talking about. We refer to them as the ESER grants, or a lot of people will say COVID money. This was essentially support from the federal government. The first one that came out was ESER 1 up there. It was just over $190,000. ESER 2 was 741. And then finally, the big one, the rescue plan that we refer to as ESER 3, was about 1.74 billion. So, again, a significant amount of cash that was coming in from the federal government. The thing about it is, when all of those funds were coming in, we had a school board that was very much engaged in, "How do we take one-time funds and make sure that we're paying one-time expenses?" So, there were some ideas that, well, you could reduce class sizes, you could hire teachers, you could hire paraprofessionals, you could add positions. That's fine, but those are recurring costs. So, I think we could all argue that smaller classroom size is good for kids, but eventually when that money runs out, what do you do? It's unsustainable. So, in the wisdom of the federal government, no tongue-in-cheek, this was actually a good thing, they allowed that money to be used for things like construction. So, all those HVAC projects that we talked about, those window projects, that was essentially paid for with the ESER grant money. What was the impact? Last year, we received back about $104,000 for ESER 2 reimbursements that were actually spent during FY '22, and then the remaining funds are rolled into the last year's grant for $183,000. Mr. Fuller and I had this conversation this afternoon. While this money was great from a standpoint of what it could do for the district and what it can do for our kids and our families, the problem is, is it is an accounting nightmare, because if you don't spend it by X date, it rolls over. And then when you, if you stick around for the budget presentation tonight, you'll see that you can make the bottom line work out perfectly over the course of three years, but when you start looking at a year-to-year budget, okay, well, we paid for all that, but we didn't get reimbursed for July, so then you look at last year's budget and there's a negative balance, but technically, there's not a negative balance because the money is there now. I was not an accounting major, so I've had to work very hard at it and make sure that I pay very close attention. A couple of the things that we did do with ESER 2, we did cover nurses' salaries for an additional year. Some of the things that we added that are permanent, if you will, all of the upfront costs, the TransFinder software for our buses that seem to work very, very smoothly this year. If you have kids that ride the bus, please make sure that you're taking advantage of that, the Stop Finder, so that you can literally tell, if you have to leave for work, you can check your app and talk to the kids and say, "Hey, the bus is four or five minutes away, so make sure that you're..." That was significantly nicer, I think, than the way my mother handled it. Summer school was paid for, and we're also in the process of making sure we have 200 new, 240 new student desks for the high school. ESER 3 has mostly been used for HVAC replacements, the windows and ventilation upgrades at the elementary buildings. So, for example, we had $423,000 at Winola, just under $700,000 at Matherville, and then another $213,000 for new windows at both Matherville and Sherard. So, when you start looking at what these grants can pay for, out of the $14 million, you can really have, again, a value-added situation. We have a new Tier 3 room at the high school. We've talked about this a few times. This is an opportunity for kids who don't have success in a regular classroom or in a larger setting, to be able to try to have a little bit of success so that we can make sure that we're keeping our dropout rate as close to zero as we can. Okay? If you historically look at dropout rates, they're much lower than they were 25 years ago, significantly lower than they were 40 years ago. However, until we can get to zero, we need to keep trying to see what it, what can we do to make sure every kid has what they need to be successful. Talk a little bit about the future. We'll start with curriculum, some of the things that we've done in advance of this year. Steve Miller is our new curriculum coordinator. He's been phenomenal. He's one of those guys, you can just wind him up and let him go, and he does amazing things. He gets along with people. And curriculum is one of those positions where you could hire somebody that's a genius. They have authored four books, and they come in and they can't talk to anybody, or they talk to people in such a way that it's like, "I'll tell you what you need to do." Well, as an administrator and approaching my 30th year, I can tell you how well that works with teachers. Work together, not order, significantly better. Steve was a great teacher. He's been a great instructional technology leader, and he's following through with that path of success as a curriculum coordinator. We're going to take curriculum matters off of the front line for the elementary principals. We want to make sure that by the time an idea gets to them, that there's an actual direction and goal. Steve can be that person that's talking to the instructional leaders within the classrooms so that the administrators within the building can sit down with Steve and those people and say, "Yes, this makes perfect sense." They've already met with all the grade-level teams at the, during second semester. We're talking about making sure that all curriculums have the appropriate scope and sequence, making sure that all grade levels are using appropriate materials. SEL, social emotional learning. This is a topic that I think is extremely hot right now in terms of what do kids need? This is, goes far beyond what some, an old-timer like me would consider emotional support. This is literally not just the emotional support piece. This is also teaching kids how to interact better, how to interact appropriately and make sure that they're getting along with their peers so that emotional health is significantly stronger throughout the district. NWEA MAP, the Measurements of Academic Progress, those are our internal tests. Though, when we see what test is the state of Illinois giving to measure growth through, with students or any kind of an attainment with students, that can change. That can kind of flutter in the wind a little bit. MAP is very consistent. It's normed across the nation. Way more schools use it than what, you know, we, we use here for state tests in Illinois, and you can actually start to get some longitudinal data that'll help you with growth. And you can break it down farther and see exactly why. So, a kid just doesn't walk in and a, and a teacher says to the parent, "Well, your, your son's not very good at reading." No. They can break it down farther and say, "Here are some of the skill sets." I mean, it would like, be like me walking into the gym. Carl's not very good at basketball. Well, why? Well, he can't dribble, he can't jump, and he can't run, so if you would work on those three skills, he would probably be good at basketball. You like that analogy? You don't like that analogy? But again, it breaks it down into what exactly does a kid have to be able to do, where is he successful, where do they need to improve? MAP Accelerator, this is literally an add-on that we have purchased for the MAP program to help kids build the skills that they need. It's literally impossible to ask a teacher to differentiate learning enough to do everything for every kid in the classroom. I know that sounds great on paper, but realistically in practice, it doesn't work very well. You know, I mean, it's sometimes, you know, a little bit like a parent. You can't be pulled in four different directions and be successful at all of them without a little bit of help. This is exactly what that'll do for the teachers. What do we want to do in the future? The K6 content area, we're going to make sure that we have a solid Tier 1 in ELA, English Language Arts. When we talk about tiers, just think of it as a pyramid. Tier 1 is the bottom, that's full classroom. Tier 2 is probably about 15%, and then you get up top with Tier 3, that's under 5% of the kids. So if we can make sure that we have the instruction levels at the right and appropriate pace for all kids, and making sure that we're hitting, you know, getting 85% of the kids exactly what they need, it's much easier to focus on that 15% or under that need extra help. Curriculum alignment is something that's going to continue, and when we talk about curriculum alignment, I think it's important to talk about the fact that each teacher is their own unique entity. However, we want to make sure that everyone is teaching appropriate skill levels, appropriate grade levels, and making sure that we're doing the same things, for example, at Schurard that's happening at Winola, so all kids have the same opportunities. And I saved the, I guess the, not the bad news, but the things to pay attention to, save that for the end. What are some of the things that we need to pay attention to in our district? Most of these are not just our district, by the way. One of the biggest things are vacancies. Schurard was selected for a pilot program in the state of Illinois for a grant to try to reduce teacher vacancies. Now, when we talk to people who've left Schurard, by and large, I can tell you, they don't leave because they're unhappy, they leave because of different opportunities. So we are very close to the Quad Cities, which is a great thing, it's a benefit, but it can also be a curse because somebody doesn't have to drive very far to have a significant amount more compensation. Okay? You can't really make that argument, say, if you're in Alexis, because that's a pretty good drive to get to the Quad Cities. But when you're right here at Schurard, that's, obviously, it's a little easier leap. Talked to two different people from the high school that approached me this summer in public, and they thanked me for how awesome their time was at Schurard, even though I was only here for a year. They very much enjoyed it, and they literally said, it was kind of a financial decision for my family. So we have the intangibles, we have what people want, but again, that proximity to the Quad Cities, sometimes it just turns into simple economics. That grant that we got from the state of Illinois is designed to help with teacher vacancies through what they consider new and creative ways to encourage people to stay. So right now, we're looking at things like, how do we pay for more education for teachers? How do we pay for more certification? How do we do things like retention bonuses, signing bonuses? But again, we have to keep in sight that this is probably a one-time payment, so we don't want to put something in place that would be recurring costs. Scheduling and transportation, our district enrollment, if you look at the back of your prospectus there, you can see that it's relatively stable. But again, I think we always have to be looking at that, what is the best level of staffing versus how many classes can we offer kids at the high school? What are our class sizes like at the lower levels? Transportation, we have a good transportation department. Mr. Boucher set in motion to buy two new school buses every year to try to rotate through the fleet. And that is a, after talking to some of the area superintendents, let's just say, that was a phenomenal decision by Mr. Boucher and the board to make sure that we're keeping up with, not getting too old of buses on the road. Energy efficiencies, when you pulled up, you saw the turbine, the wind turbine spinning, let's, I just keep a positive thought, that's what I say. Let's keep going, keep going. You know, I like to hear that, you know, that womp womp sound. Interest rates, what goes up must come down. So right now, as Mr. Fuller Love alluded to, we made a significant amount of money because, and this is a side note, in the state of Illinois, all that money that was borrowed from bonds for these construction projects, when something like Winola got delayed, that million dollars that didn't go out, you can't take legally that money that you borrowed and roll it into a CD and make money off of it. The only thing that you can do is keep it, for example, in your money market, your cash flow checking account. We just simply switched a couple of things over to the Illinois School District Liquid Asset Fund that is throughout the state of Illinois. So instead of making what would have been, when interest rates were extremely low, these are real numbers, 0.26%, today, when we left, I checked, it's like 5.1%. So I mean, it's literally phenomenal. But again, what goes up must come down. Cheer for Carl building a house. And finally, levy rates. I alluded at the beginning that our tax levies have continued to drop. We're probably now at the equalization point. Tax rates cannot continue to go down and be able to keep the programs that we have here. We've kind of reached that point. So I don't think EAV, the value, property valuation, can continue to rise like it has for the last six, seven years. And finally, the thought that I always tell people to keep in mind, education is always going to be your path to a better future. Certainly, our students are worth it. I remind people that I'm a walking, talking, very loud, very large example of what education can do for you, because I still see some of my former high school teachers, and they scratch their head haw-haw when they see doctor in front of my name, because they remember me from high school. But this district has given a lot to me, that's probably the main reason I want to be able to give back. So thank you so much, very much appreciate you coming tonight. The flow will be, we will adjourn in here and head to the library for the rest of the board meeting, which everyone is welcome to stay for. I'm not saying it's more attractive than the cookie table, but you are welcome. So thank you very much for coming tonight, we appreciate it.
Okay, we're now back in session. With that, Dr. Johnson, is there any changes to the agenda? No changes. With that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda as adopted.
No, not now.
Your second?
A motion was made by Mr. Lyons, seconded by Mrs. DeBlak, to adopt the agenda as presented. Mrs. Lyons?
Yes.
Mrs. DeBlak?
Yes.
Mr. Kaber?
Yes.
Mrs. Cleveland?
Yes.
Mr. Helm?
Yes.
Mr. Fuller Love?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, I've got no one for recognition. I'm providing, seat new board member. So we did have a vacancy on the board. It was great. We had 10 people apply, and we did interviews the last two nights, and after much, much deliberation, we have decided to seat Mr. Aaron Dominic, who will be joining us on the board down there. So Aaron, would you like to say a few things about yourself?
Yeah, no, I'm just, I'm excited to be a part of the board. Been in the district now for about 13 years. You know, I've been in the military, the National Guard, for the last 26 years, and I've come and doing that. So looking for another opportunity to serve my, serve my community, and I guess it's a great opportunity. Thank you.
With that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the appointment of Aaron Dominic to fill the vacancy.
Dominic?
Yes.
A motion was made by Mrs. Lyons, seconded by Mrs. DeBlak, to appoint Aaron Dominic to fill the opening board vacancy. Mrs. Lyons?
Yes.
Mrs. DeBlak?
Yes.
Mr. Helm?
Yes.
Mrs. Cleveland?
Yes.
Mr. Kaber?
Yes.
Mr. Fuller Love?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, so with being a new board member?
Yep, he's got to sit next to the principal. So one of the things he has to do is take the open office, and so he doesn't have to do it all by himself, or all of them do it, so it's not weird.
Do you have one more?
No.
Oh, the policies got, okay. Okay, let's try to do this, guys. Okay. One, two, three. I solemnly swear that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the offices of members of the Board of Education, charged by our community unit and school District 200, in accordance with the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Illinois, and the laws of the State of Illinois to the rest of my ability. I further swear that I shall respect taxpayer interests by serving as a faithful protector of the school district's ethics. I shall encourage and respect the free expression of opinion by my fellow board members and others who seek a hearing before the Board while respecting the privacy of students and employees. I shall recognize that a board member has no legal authority as an individual and that decisions can be made only by a majority vote at a public board meeting. I shall abide by the majority decisions of the Board while retaining the right to seek changes in such decisions through ethical and constructive actions. As part of the Board of Education, I shall accept responsibility for my role in the equitable and quality of education of every student in the school district. I shall foster with the Board expenses and expectations of the community, for the goals of final outcomes, and set course for Schurard Community Unit School District 200. I shall assist in establishing the structure and environment designed to ensure all students have the opportunity to attain their maximum potential through a sound organizational framework. I shall strive to ensure continuous assessment of student achievement in all conditions affecting the education of our children in compliance with state law. I shall serve as an education key habit on behalf of students and parents in schools or schools to advance the vision for Schurard Community Unit School District 200, and I shall strive to work together with the district in its intent to lead the school district forward, fulfilling the vision of the Board's creed, fostering excellence for every student, preparing his academic skills, knowledge, and personal development. We're getting better, guys. We're getting better.
I don't mean to chuckle, but it's like, when you hear everybody saying wrong, or I say it wrong, and then it's like...
Y'all was wrong. I had it right.
You had it right, Dan?
Yeah.
Next time, you get to do it solo. Lead us. Okay, over to the consent agenda. Is there any questions about the consent agenda? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda items as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
A motion was made by Mr. Kaber, seconded by Mr. Helm, to approve the consent agenda items as presented. Mr. Kaber?
Yes.
Mr. Helm?
Yes.
Mrs. Lyons?
Yes.
Mrs. Cleveland?
Yes.
Mrs. DeBlak?
Yes.
Mr. Fuller Love?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, over to the board superintendent, Dr. J.
Good evening again. Our first item up for business today is the second reading and proposed adoption of the Press Policies, Issue 112. Hats off to Becky, she was able to dig up the, what used to be the standard format for the changes for the press policies.
Thank you, Becky. That makes it way easier.
And it actually took a phone call because we didn't know where they had footnotes. That used to be the default setting so that everybody could just take one glance at it and, oh, that's exactly what changed, let's move on. But it was like 28 clicks in or something like that now. I think after they did those 500-page ones in the last couple of years, they would learn, but hey, that's okay. So there were no changes from last month. I know I talked to a few of you about some specifics on there that hopefully, after reading the footnote and the Cliff Notes versions here, that helped out quite a bit in understanding. The majority of these are simply updates, updates as recommended by the state attorney.
I know there was a concern with, because in all the policies, one of them is staying in the oath of office that we just took, and I, and I think there were some squabbles around town that the part in the oath about, was it, any conflict of interest was taken out. I would just like to point out, that changed back in 2019. That is not a current change, so I'm not sure why the scuttle was spread around on social media, that we were getting rid of this code of conduct thing, or interest. We still sign with every board committee that we're on an ethics agreement, so it's still in there. And we just don't say the oath like it was written five years ago. And that, this is an oath that was published through the press, ready that, to try to unify the districts, and so I just wanted to be clarified that this has not changed, and I just wanted that on record.
And it's still in our, still in our policy.
And we still have to sign every, oh my gosh, every year, you know, and pledge, and any committee we're on, we sign it again, it goes on record for accounting.
Any other questions on anything that was in the last press policy? Okay, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the press policy, Issue 112, as presented.
Move.
Your second?
My second. A motion was made by Mr. Helm, seconded by Mrs. Lyons, to approve Press Policies 112 as presented. Mr. Helm?
Yes.
Mrs. Lyons?
Yes.
Mrs. Cleveland?
Yes.
Mr. Kaber?
Yes.
Mrs. DeBlak?
Yes.
Mr. Fuller Love?
Yes.
Motion carried.
You can go ahead, it, oh, I'm...
Yeah, he's now seated, so he has to...
All right, he's seated, so, and...
Yay. First time.
Joke's on you, man.
Okay, next item, the presentation of the tentative FY '24 budget. Again, refresh your course and what everybody on the board knows. Tentative budget is presented, sits on display for a minimum of 30 days. At that point in time, anybody who wants to stop by the office and actually see the paper copy on the state form is able to do so, to take a look and see what the tentative or proposed budget is going to be. After 30 days on display, usually at the next board meeting, the board can take a vote and adopt the budget for FY '24. Okay? I've handed out to the board three different things. The proposed, excuse me, the proposed revenue, the proposed expenditures, those are on our SBS software sheets, that you're familiar seeing on the board docs. And then this is the actual official state form, which was actually down for maintenance today. That was great timing. So Lindsey went to load the SBS numbers into this, it was an error message until about 3:30 this afternoon, but nonetheless. A couple of things to bring your attention to, on the front page of the ISB budget form, up in the top right-hand box, you want that to be purple or blue, not red. It says unbalanced budget, however, a deficit reduction plan is not required at this time. As we talked about all the way back to my first interview, one of the goals of the board was to make sure that we keep the tax levy fair, keep the property tax rates as low as possible, spend a little bit of the reserves while still maintaining the quality services that we have. I'm proud to say that this is a budget that will do that, which is why it says unbalanced budget, because it is paying down the reserves and drawing into those just a little bit, but at approximately a 4% rate, ballpark of it here. Okay? If you look at the second page, that's where you start to see, line item 22 is literally the bottom line for each of the different funds. As you can see, the... As you can see, the, um, out of a budget of approximately $14 million, in the Ed Fund, we anticipate a negative balance, or negative spending of 400, just under $434,000. Again, approximately 4%, bringing that down. Okay? Um, our operations and maintenance fund is very close. Our debt service fund, that's the bond repayment schedule. That statutorily, we get from the levy, what we need to pay the bonds that have already been approved. Transportation, that's the misleading one. Actually, there's two misleading ones. Transportation, because one of the big buses, the 71 passenger with the lift, that was like 14 months behind schedule, um, that's coming out of this fiscal year's budget, not last. So the money was budgeted two years ago, however, we just took delivery of it this fiscal year, since July 1st. That's why we see, so the transportation budget as a whole is very healthy. However, when we're taking an extra bus, uh, actually, two buses, out of this fiscal year that we weren't planning on, that money had already been earmarked. But again, it's coming out of this fiscal year, so we do show a negative balance there, because we're technically spending more than we anticipate bringing in this year. Okay? IMRF, um, that is, uh, that was a recommendation by the auditors last year to start to trim that a little bit. IMRF is one of those, uh, and Social Security, those are two of the funds that you literally can ask for what, what you need on the tax levy. So I think the board's done a very job of being detail-oriented, good stewards of the taxpayers' money. And then finally, the other big number, the capital projects, shows a $1.6 million deficit. That's because the money came in 18 months ago, and we've not spent it all. Okay? So we're anticipating, uh, a negative there, simply because we're not bringing in any more money. The bonds have already been sold, now we're just going to get some. Uh, and then our TORT fund, um, the TORT fund reflects a $32,000 negative balance. Uh, that is because that's approximately how much the, um, we joked about it the other day. This is about how much the legal bills went down last year. So, uh, any questions overall on the tentative budget? Again, sits for 30 days, public is welcome to come and view. We can change it during the course of those 30 days to, uh, reflect any new things that we find out. Um, I do have a few points for you. Some of the things, and again, I, I referenced this in the state of the district address, the year-to-year budgeting right now is tricky on paper, but when you look at the longitudinal budgets, say, over the last four or five years, the bottom lines do look pretty good. But because we have those ESIR grants sitting in there that are not completely expended, and it's a reimbursement-style spend anyway, that can be the issue. I talked about the buses, so far, a back order, if you will. Um, so there's certain little intricacies that we're still dealing with, with delays, that cause those red numbers in the budget. Uh, but again, that ESIR money will be completely expended, I would guess, this year. Okay? The general state aid and the evidence-based funding formula is going up about 4.5% this year. Uh, last year, we got 5.529 million from the state of Illinois. This year, we will get 5.796 million. So we have about a 4.5% increase in our general state aid. Right now, we are designated tier two, uh, which means we fall about 70s. The district spends and it brings in about 77% of what ISB considers adequate funding. Okay? And this again is a, it's kind of a nice welcome change, that, yes, they're telling us that you're not at adequate funding, but they're also putting their money where their mouth is and kicking some more money in. So, you know, 4.5% increase there. Uh, we're going to continue with general state aid, uh, to put into the O and M fund. Uh, we're going to, uh, in the past years, we put $150,000 in there, which is what the auditors have directed us to do. I'm going to do that again. The food service structure, returned to the pre-COVID era, uh, with less federal funding. Uh, last year, everybody was nervous, worked very well. Uh, we'll start our tax levy discussions, uh, next month. As far as spending goes, the new bus purchases are trending significantly higher, as in about $50,000 when we're looking at buying two buses. The capital fund, again, um, we still have about, this fiscal year will pay out about $10 million, because that's when those big projects at Winola, in particular, the Sherard Grade School, are coming in. Okay? Let's see, undoubtedly, the Sherard Grade School addition is going to force us to have an amended budget, because anytime you have a construction project, that is approximately 50% of your annual budget. There's no, there's no margin for error with construction costs. And the last thing that I would point out is our various general liability policies for insurance increased over $50,000 this last year. We had an audit for replacement value, uh, on just about every single piece of property the district owns and building, and, um, it, it went up $50,000. Sorry, a lot of facts and figures, any questions?
Approximately, um, of us drawing numbers, or how we do it on cash on hand, like, you know, back when the General Assembly wasn't doing state aid, one of the things that was great for us to say is like, we could basically make it through almost an entire year without cutting any programs up, how are we looking at these things? And... Based on what, and also, how is that compared to what the state says? Because we were significantly over the state recommended, we're just wondering how we compare to that.
Yep, and it's actually on the last page of the prospectus that we handed out in the, um, at the beginning. I gave mine away, my colleague. Uh, that part of it, yes. So the, the last sheet, it looks like this. That's actually from last year's audit. We have number three total cash days on hand, 277.65. Now, that'll go down a little bit, this is our fiscal year's audit, and that'll go down a little bit, but it's still going to be above 250.
Is that calendar days, or is that school?
Calendar days, I brushed out, yeah. Six months used to be the golden standard.
The state was talking about knocking it down to something, weren't they? What, what number was that when they were talking?
Uh, I heard the, I heard the figure two months knocked around, and let me tell you, when those, uh, local legislators were in the superintendent's meeting, they got an earful on that, because we're not a, you know, we're not a tax cap district. And, and we very much depend on the fluctuations, if you will, and they can really hurt us compared to the suburban districts that are pushing for that type of thing. So, um, I, the people who knew significantly more about finance, it was almost a sad team effort, you know, it was poor guys.
So they, you're really surprised they'd come up with something like that.
So, definitely eight years ago, with their payments to school hearings. So, what have you done for a little bit? So, I, that has not received any traction, so it'll come back this fall, I'm sure, but no traction yet. Because it punishes it, districts have been, you know, careful with their money, actually responsible for that. And as the tax rate goes down, your phones probably don't ring, oh, thank you, appreciate that. But if they go up, I guess the phones might start to ring.
All right. Other questions? Okay, on, on display for 30 days. Okay, moving on to Communication Force Funds, does anybody have anything to go through? Okay, hearing nothing, I'll entertain a motion to go into Executive Session, according to Bob Ila C., Section 120C, Subsection C., Subsection 1, Route 12, 1621.
Second. A motion was made by Mr. Kaber, seconded by Mrs. Lyons, to go into Executive Session. Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carry.
Mr. Johnson, you got a, Alex, you got a question, so we can... Yep, popping through.
Thank you, everyone.